We we budget and the twenty K we actually spent. And then a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in apparatus maintenance, which is a combination of increased per unit charges from uh from the the maintainers. As well as the increased amount, uh the quantity of maintenance our fleet requires.
So those things I would think that maintenance on fleets has lots of history and unless you have a, you know, we used to have some ambulances that had huge problems that we nobody forecast. But in general, you would think that maintenance costs on equipment ought to be reasonably predictable and they get higher with time as the fleet ages, but you know that. So uh you know, hopefully we can look at some history and make sure they're actually.
Yes, sir. We've we've done that. Um that's one of the things that leads us to in the previous slide on capital to request the new type one apparatus. Um challenge for us is we have a sample size of six and the oldest is a nineteen ninety eight, the the newest are the ones that were purchased in seventeen. And so there's significant differences um and we have a a rig that is uh would charitably characterize as a sick rig and it's been that way since we got it. Uh this has a history of problems. And so we've we've taken a look at um try to do the trend analysis. We've taken a look at other agencies. Um the sample size is small the to start blending out things predictive things. We know generally speaking, uh when you start getting to the in beyond ten into the fifteen year range. Uh they start having a lot of problems. It's not really a mileage thing. Uh diesel engine will run for a million miles if it always sits at eighteen hundred RPM twelve hours a day. As it runs the interstates, that that's not how our apparatus are run. Uh and then their custom apparatus. And so there are significant challenges, say with a new model year and things like that. Uh that can confound some of the data. So it it is it is more challenging um than it would first appear and we invested significant effort in this about a year ago. Trying to analyze our maintenance records. Mary was very helpful applying um some of her background to to see. If we could target and really make the the value proposition that um that this rig now costs more to maintain than to buy. Um it but really. The greatest challenge is things like a major driveline replacement is going to be associated with a catastrophic event. And those are hard to predict other than to say they happen more frequently beyond this many years in frontline service.
So one other thing that I think we do is when we get reimbursed by account by the state, for example, we go out on. We send a lot of vehicles out. I think all that money is close into the general fund.
It does.
And it seems to me that if we're getting reimbursed for mileage and for, you know, I don't know, go into the capital fund, not into the general fund. Uh because it actually is being reimbursed for using up our capital base. Uh so it's makes sense to me to instead of allocating it to the general fund to allocate that to, you know, a capital fund, because it's. That's what it's for.
Yes, sir. There'd be the no reason not to do that, other than just with. The simplicity of all the inflows go to the general fund and then get distributed from there to where they're needed. It also ties to the percentage of the reserve based on which is based on a general fund.
Yeah, but but in reality, what we're doing when we. If we're we're transferring money from our capital base into our operating base by doing the accounting that way. And that's not really the way. One would want to do that, I don't think. I mean, it's not. It's not an accounting convention necessarily, but from a. Just, you know, if we're using up assets more more readily because we're renting them out, basically. Uh we ought to be reserving some of that money because we're wearing them out faster and we're going to have to replace them faster.
Yes, sir. The board previously directed that money flow into the general fund, but there there's no reason it couldn't flow to the capital.
Just the capital part of it, not all of it. So if we if you need to bring that back to the board to ask the question about that, we should do that, I think.
Right. Well, so this is actually good timing because. We're preparing the budget for next year, so we could start that at July first. If that's the board's direction, we could budget where the. Fleet P the piece we get for apparatus. On strike teams goes into the general fund. I mean, excuse me, goes into the capital projects fund, not into the general fund. That July one would be the a great time to start that and we could budget it that way if that is the board's direction.
That would have to be done during the budget negotiation.
It doesn't have to be, but it would be nice because that's when I bring the budget next month, I could budget it that way if that's what the board wants.
Well, we've got over eighteen million capital. Pro- projects, at least in the long range forecast. It's almost twenty million.
If I may, sir, just that that number does require a caveat that that's making assumptions about the cost of fire station construction that are. Unproven in the current inflationary cycle.
So like they could be more.
Yes, sir. It's very likely to be more with regard to construction costs.
I thought we had increased it by twenty percent.
We did.
And that may be even better. Under the teeter plan. You have to spend your capital fund balances down to zero as well. To borrow.
Right. We're gonna we're gonna talk about that later, but but so but it doesn't matter where you have it then. You have to spend all the money down to zeros or where you keep it isn't. It isn't critical. We hope we don't have to use the teacher plan.
To burn again, yeah. And the other.
Yeah, they I got I got one more.
Okay.
Um so in twenty twenty eight and twenty nine, the imputed rates we have from Cisara go down. For like twelve percent or something dramatically lower than we currently have. And that seems like an incredibly rosy assumption to me. Uh I I know it might be what they gave us, but we we already kind of know that what they gave us, even they know what they gave us, you know, because they they did comment on their thing saying that doesn't reflect. Last year's market changes or this year's market change. And so I guess. That line also to me should be informed by what we do in government best. Um so I. I don't necessarily know that it makes a difference whether we put it in the government best numbers and sort of the corrections, if you want to think of it that way, or we put it in. You know, the. It the sum still ends up the same.
Uh yes, sir. I just the so the U A L reduction is based on Cesara's accounting. From stale data, obviously, saying that the U A L would be paid off um by that date and therefore we would see the savings. A reduction of forty percent in our our cost of pension. Um I would strongly suggest not changing the number provided by Cesara. Uh that said, if we had a second opinion that suggested that based on market speculatively, that based on market returns or since the data which was used to inform that was available. They would anticipate some other that we certainly could in include that as an additional one.
It is an additional item, but we can do that all in the government best numbers, which basically just impacts our. Again, the sum is still the same.
It correct.
Okay. That makes sense. That's fine. Um. And. Yeah, I think that was. Yep. That was most of the ones I had in them.
Okay. Any other?
I mean, in general, I mean, so you we we should have. I should have. Um. You guys are so much better at this than we were six years ago. I mean, it's gone from zero. Well, it's gone from a really low. I don't even know we did long range forecast, but they were. Not not great. And now I think you guys have got it down to a. Roughly a science, at least. And you can always differ on assumptions, you know, that's fine, but at least it's well presented and. It's straightforward and you guys have got it figured out. So thank you. Good job.
There are some.
Yes, we have Tim Hannon.
Okay.
Hands raised. Jonathan Goodwin.
So I'm glad to see uh board putting all this effort into long range uh financing because it's. You know, it's a troublesome matter. Um it's, you know, it's not easy to. Not a not an easy matter. And I just want to say that over the over the years I've seen. In previous epochs, a lot of effort go into this, so that reality just. Does what it wants to do. So just bear that in mind. There's there's not much real security in all this. Um I wanted to make a couple of comments on some comments of Director Jorgens. First about Cesara. Director Jorgens, please don't be so kind to Cesara to say, oh, they're not wrong. They're just different. They have such a. Horrible track record over decades of every time making, you know, when there's a choice, they make the wrong one. Um and that's probably somewhat overstated, but. Probably not a lot. I mean, I'm really surprised the uh county district attorney has not turned or grand jury rather hasn't. Turned their attention there. I mean, it's it's really amazing. Astonishing. The other thing is about um. The maintenance of the fuel breaks. So I was going to make a comment about that because it was said that the the money. Basically, the money skimmed off the top that's left over for uh you know, from um. Admin expenses is going into the general fund. Here's what I would suggest, that that money not go into the general fund and and not go to just. Randomly doing um maintenance because, you know, the projects themselves. Yeah, you know, did not have the benefit of full um. You know, the the thought that might have gone into them if it wasn't on a grant deadline. Um I think there ought to be real genuine fuels planning. Also, just just saying we're going to do. We're going to enforce our codes. The codes, those are like. Target shooting compared to hunting. I mean, you know, there's something to it, but it's not real life. Uh the the places that need to be treated, uh you know, that it it really needs to be studied. Um and you know, you're getting real money from, you know, over a million dollars from uh from these grants. Uh you could spend some money actually really studying. The the situation in the district and the input and getting input from these other agencies, but really looking at how. This stuff could be designed to really benefit the environment and by the way also. Significantly reduce fire safety instead of just with a checklist. Uh actually, you know, studying the areas and you know, so on and so on. I I think the board ought to have a little process of. Considering this, you know, somehow have a thought process, you know, you got, you know, I mean, I say this and what do you do? Uh I I think if you had some kind of way of, you know, talking to some people who know about this stuff and thinking about what the options are. I think the outcome could be far superior than just, you know. You know, merely relying on on code enforcement or doing nothing at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Okay.
One more.
Jacob Arola.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh I'm making more comments uh tonight than usual, only because I I believe this is a workshop. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, uh. So um I had a question. Uh actually, I was going to support the chief uh in saying that um. You know, that money from strike teams uh that the overage should probably go into the general fund. Um you know. The specific rigs are the ones that go out each time. It's one specific unit. Um so to have that roll into the capital, um it could be dissected further. We can say, okay, well, then that's only going to go to the specific unit. And administrative fees for single resources should go back to salaries and benefits. And we can do that game all day long. Just. I think it's smarter to have the board take the extra money leftover and distribute it how they feel is necessary. On a year to year basis. And hopefully, once all of our apparatus are updated. Um and functioning properly, we ought to get rid of the lemons. We won't need to make these large expenditures um. You know, in in the next couple of years. Uh secondly, I had a question for Director Jorgens. He kind of coyly uh said he wanted to increase the one hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand for. Very vague grants. I was wondering if you can speak further to that. Um as last year at this time, you suggested we have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked. For what has been less than seventy five thousand dollars in expenditures and even further less. To be utilized by the public. Um a number. Of that size is equivalent to what it would be cost to have a firefighter per year. So um I would think that public would like to have. Something more concrete than um, you know, these general kickbacks, if you will, from their tax dollars. Again, in one of the most affluent communities uh in the state.
I think they're we're going to be responding to that in the uh committee report that's coming up about the grant committee.
I mean, today is the day we're talking about the forecast. So what what is the five hundred thousand dollars going towards?
Actually, it's not allowed in our procedures for individual people to address the board members individually.
I thought this is a workshop.
It's still a board meeting. But you can speak all you want, but you're not supposed to address things to individual board members.
Okay, I I guess addressing the board, if anyone cares to uh comment on what. Uh five hundred thousand or four hundred thousand dollar change, so five hundred percent. Uh that's significant and worth worth discussion.
So I'll comment it on it for the board. Um. I think the challenge was we set aside five hundred thousand dollars as it was. Um and but put a lot of limits on what we could spend it on. And the only thing we were able to spend it on was wire for screens, which is a great idea to harden people's homes. Um and I think we've been able to spend roughly sixty thousand dollars on that so far. And the question is, is that what we ought to limit things to or should we expand that program? And again, that's going to be addressed in in a committee report uh later in the meeting.
At that time in the uh meeting, will we be able to go back then and adjust the long range forecast?
To be clear on a process standpoint, the long range forecast is is not the budget. The budget is the process that will begin with the budget hearing or the budget workshop and then two budget hearings culminating in adoption of the budget. In June, so it would be very, it would be a departure from our normal procedure. For the long range financial forecast to be operating as a budget item.
Thank you, Chief. That's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We move on. Nine point three, early payoff of debt from Station Forty Three.
Good evening, directors. At the February board meeting, the board requested an agenda item to discuss the district's options for early payoff of the debt issuance which financed. The construction of Station Forty Three and possible dissolution of the Maraga Orinda Fire Protection District Public Financing Corporation. The outstanding balance for the district's debt for Station Forty Three is two million, three hundred fifty thousand dollars at an interest rate of two point one four percent. The debt can be paid off early with no penalty. The total payoff amount is approximately two point five million dollars. If the debt is paid off early, then the financing corporation can be dissolved. The financing corporation can only be dissolved if the debt is paid off. Staff requests for direction regarding the early payoff of the debt for Station Forty Three and dissolution of the public facilities financing corporation. This concludes the introductory remarks.
I would just add one amplifying remark that this was included at a director's request. There's no um. There's no pressure to close out the financing corporation. Um if the board directs that this is not something the board wants to do, it's as simple as saying. This isn't something we do not want to do. We have no plans to continue to use the financing corporation or to encumber additional debt underneath the financing corporation. So thi- this could be a this could be a very short item or the board could provide substantive direction if they uh wanted to pursue. Um paying off the debt from Station Forty Three to close it out as addressed in the staff report. Transferring the debt is not an option, so that the only way to close out the financing corporation is to liquidate its debts.
So there I think there were actually two separate questions that you kind of stuck together here. One was, I think, came from Director Dancer about, you know, can we pay it off? And the other one was for me about, you know, what are we doing with this organization? So two comments I'd make. Uh we have a board of directors. Pretty sure California law requires you to have board meetings and fun things like that. We ought to actually do it. Um because otherwise, you you know, all the board members, all of us are on the board and we all have potential liability from that. And I does that entity actually have B N O insurance? Because it's not a consolidated entity, right? I mean, it's not a tech legally consolidated entity, right? Because it was set up to specifically not be illegally consolidated entity because it doesn't it wouldn't need a separate board. So does our insurance specifically uncover cover? Line item in the policy that entity?
Yes, it does. So every year we have to do our application to FARA, which is the next item on the agenda, right? And so, yes, then we have to list that we list the financing corporation. So that is how then that it the board is covered under the directors and officers insurance.
And and so my other comments would be, so we need to be a little more formal about that, in my opinion. And I think we ought to have a formal policy, not just a practice, to not use it anymore, because it it was a. Pretty questionable concept in the first place. I mean, we have, you know, the the law that. Enabled this to become a special district, had lots of rules in there about what kind of votes it took to have debt, especially in particular, long term debt. And that was a vehicle to get around those regulations, which kind of bothers me in general. So um. You know, I would say that maybe I doubt we can do it this time, but next time we I would propose we have a proposal that says we. You know, make it a policy not to use that entity anymore, not just a practice, not to use it. And I think as far as paying off, we can currently earn in our. Portfolio, even with the with the county, as as, you know, interesting as you will discuss later, how how well they're doing managing our our cash. Uh we're earning more than that on our money. More than the two and four percent we're paying. So we're actually having to arbitrage at the moment, might might be short lived. So at least at the moment, it would certainly not be the time to pay off that debt.
I agree.
I I agree too. Uh uh this Derek Denziger, like you said, I I'd ask this to be on mainly because I didn't really know the terms of it and. You know, the implications for paying it off, but I I really feel that with the two point one four and. With the uncertainty in the market and in our finances right now, it's not not the time to. To want to pay it off.
This is Director Romer. I want to echo both the Director Jorgens and Director Jan Denzinger's concerns. I cannot imagine why, given all the economic uncertainty that we're facing in the next few months and years. And the financial challenges, why we would pay off a a loan that's a two point one five percent. In an inflationary environment of six plus percent, um. Uh I think you're right on the procedural matters and the policy, but uh if there's any way that we can. Hold on to what is in fact a free money, we do it.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is Director Hassler. I had one question. On the finance corp, are we incurring any fees to keep it in? I know we don't like it, but are there fees or expenses related to the maintenance of the finance corp?
Right. So the way annually we have to file a tax return. And so then those tax return costs are part of the audit costs.
Okay, but they're not. That.
And and pay your two hundred dollar uh. Their state fees for it too, I'm sure, but because they're all for all corporations.
I think it was like a twenty dollar filing fee or something.
In comparison, I was just thinking about the comparison if we had, you know, fifty thousand we were paying or something like that, or it would be. Change the map.
That's actually another interesting question about, you know, this whole thing is, you know, some companies of of practice is that you. Um. You put into reserves, you know, when you're. Much like with um the money we're getting in when we rent out our vehicles, uh loan out our vehicles, but we get paid for it, so it's kind of renting them. Um. You know, another thing that often happens is people put reserves up in the amount of the depreciation on their assets. So every year, you know, when your. Equipment gets a year older, uh you know, and you you're eventually going to have to replace it, you put into reserves into the capital fund, the amount of money. That you are that that asset has gone down in value, so that you, when the time comes, you just write a check and you have the asset and life is good. Um so that's another way to, number one, build up your reserves, but also have, you know, because those reserves count too. Um. To to have a cushion. And but to have things, you know, being reserved for as they're being utilized and and used up.
We we have no hands raised on nine point three. Public comment.
We do not have any hands raised.
Okay, we'll move on to nine point four. District investment options.
The February board meeting, the board requested an agenda item to discuss the district's investment options. Since the since inception, the district has participated voluntarily in the Contra Costa County Investment Pool. Also, since inception, the district has only invested in LAPE, right? LAPE is a investment pool managed by the state of California. The advantages to using LAPE is that it's liquid, it's safe and stable. Disadvantages to LAPE is that it has a low interest rate. The LAPE interest rate is currently around two percent. So the district's investment options have not been a consideration in for over the past several years because interest rates were so low. But over the last year, as interest rates have dramatically increased, there are appropriate investments available to the district that should be considered at this time. There's two primary decisions before the board tonight. The first decision is whether the district remains in the county investment pool. The advantage to staying in the county investment pool is it gives the district the option to borrow money using the cap using the teeter plan. The last time the district used the teeter plan was in November twenty nineteen, as we've talked tonight, right when the North Orinda. Fuel break was in process and we had a lot of money out from striking. The disadvantage to staying in the county pool is we have to maintain all investments in the county pool. Our investment options are somewhat limited in the pool. We cannot use some products offered by investment management firms, nor can we purchase money market funds. However, we could start investing in non liquid fixed income securities through the county investment pool. The second is decision tonight, if the board is, if the board decides to stay in the county treasury. Then does the board want the district to start investing beyond LAPE in non li- liquid fixed income securities? If the board decides to leave the county treasury tonight, then the district can use a professional money asset manager to manage the investments. There's firms that specialize in investment services to public agencies. Um I met, Mary and I met with Chandler Asset Management, which is one of the firms that provides these services to local government agencies, including the city of Orinda. And San Ramon Valley Fire. Chandler offers a service that the district could utilize to professionally manage the district's investments. And to earn more money, more interest likely beyond LAPE, what LAPE offers. So staff requests for direction tonight regarding whether the district remains in the county treasury. And if the board decides to stay in the treasury, then whether we should start investing beyond LAPE in fixed. Fixed asset, fixed income securities. If the board decides tonight to leave the county treasury, then at a future meeting, we would bring back additional options and additional details. Regarding professional asset management of district funds. This concludes my report.
So. Okay. Um so, yeah, I I just clarification first. So you said if we stay in, we have the ability to manage some of our own money instead of having them manage it?
So we would make decisions. Okay, so that was one of um in the attachments. So we could, what we would do is we would tell the county, oh, we have a million dollars that we can tie up for a year, up to a year. And then the county, they sent, um there was a sample in the packet they sent, okay, here you go. You could buy a U S T bill at for six for six months. Or you could buy um a federal home loan bank security, those kind of things. So yes, we can buy those fixed income government securities.
So we tell them to do it or we do it?
We make the decision, right? I would tell them, yes, buy that home loan bank at four percent for a year. And then they would do it.
They execute trade or they do appropriately execute trade. So we provide the direction. They actually push the button.
Do you know who they use for and what kind of fees the brokers pay? Depending brokers.
Let's see. I some of those, so they do, right? They all have, there's county brokers that they use. So. Let's see. Um so I mean, they didn't, I think it depends on the broker, but they have a variety of brokers that they utilize.
So if I may, sir, just um more than eighty five percent of the count of the treasury investment pool is managed internally by county treasury staff. We place trades directly with brokers. Um. And then we're very conscious of the additional investment fees for pool participants as a result of retaining money market fees, which is why they don't currently retain money market fund. Money retain a money market fund. Uh but we could, if the board's direction is to proceed with something like this, we would, we could certainly engage with county treasury for more information about the fees associated with that.
So just as a benchmark, the last quarter of last year, we earned two point something low percent, two point one ish percent with Cesara. U S Treasury, three month treasuries, which are incredibly liquid. Uh and and you can sell them in four seconds with online, literally enter the trade and they are gone right then. So it's no not a liquidity, it's not a long term, you know, illiquid asset, because you use the word illiquid in there a lot. Treasuries are all incredibly liquid. Um and 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 the three months basically don't change in value on a daily basis anyway, almost at all, because they're so short. But the during that time, those rates were more like three and a half percent on treasuries and you can buy them through Schwab, I called the other day. They charge you a dollar per trade. Doesn't matter if you buy twenty million dollars, it's a dollar per trade. And and there's no markup. Normally, the way bonds used to work is you, you know, they they'd say, oh, we aren't charging a fee, but they're actually marketing, you know, they buy it here and they sell it to you at a different price. They don't charge you a fee, but they had a markup. They don't have any markup anymore because they figure that's such a competitive market. They literally only charge a dollar per trade. So and and all we have to do is forecast what our cash flow is going to be month by month going out. You can have twenty, I think you said twenty five percent of it in a money market. Money markets today earn four point eight percent. If they're invested in U S treasuries, three month short term treasuries, they earn four point nine percent. So that's. Three or two and a half percent more than than Cesara's paying us. If you just assume that you start with twenty million, you end up with zero at the end of the year and and not even that it's linear. If you only have forty percent of that, it's eight million bucks. It's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year is what this spread is. So we don't need to hire an outside person to do that. You have to make, you know, twelve trades a year. Based on whatever your your forecast for your cash flow is, you can leave a bunch of money in a money market. You can literally write the checks and it automatically sells the money market funds for you. And make your check valid. There are lots of really simple systems to do this that don't take, you know, the county to do it for us. So, uh you know, whether we do it through the county and do our own trades or whether we do, because they. So, uh, you know, whether we do it through the county and do our own trades or whether we do, because they somehow they're not getting the yields that. They should get, um, or whether we do it ourselves, I'm not sure we, at the moment, given our reserves, it's not obvious we're going to be using the teeter plan. No matter what, unless things get really bad. And the other question is, can we go back in? On what kind of notice?
You say we can? On what, with what kind of notice? Six months notice, thirty days notice?
They didn't give me a timeframe, but they said we would have to discuss it to go back in when I talked to the, to the county, um, but we could go back in.
So maybe the worst case would be probably a year, right? Or a fiscal year or something.
The point is, is if we departed, it's not a one-way valve. If we departed the county treasury and teeter plan, we could engage them with the reenter of the later day.
You can, you don't have to hire a Chandler to manage your money for you. You have to hire, you know, you can hire a super. Inexpensive accountant or whatever, if you want to, I mean, it literally is going to take. We, we should have a monthly forecast of our cash flows anyway. It's going to take five minutes to log into your account and enter the trade once a month.
Yes, sir, I think.
Even if it just lets it in, we can only put twenty-five percent in the money market account. Fine, put twenty-five percent in and then you, your fourth task can be off by twenty-five percent every month.
Yes, sir. I think this is a thing where it would self-correct that if it is very simple, then it would not be very expensive. The, to hire someone to, to do that. I would say definitively. Um, current staff, we're, we are not built for that. We don't have the expertise and we don't have the redundancy, the depth. If someone's out and that's the person who's the button pusher.
Do we have a policy? I don't, I don't know if we have a policy.
This would require forward direction.
So that's an excellent question. We do have an investment policy. We're required by state law to have one. So we do, and that would be part of this as well. If we're going to, I mean, if we're going to broaden things right then, that would be part of what we'd have the consultant do is look, okay, let's look at our investment policy. And, and see if there's any changes that should be made.
Right. So that's, I've said, we don't have a policy for these.
Yeah, I read the policy.
Investment policy that that governs our actions.
But today you can invest in incredibly liquid, incredibly stable. Short-term money market things that are just earning, you know, like I said, you know, at least a hundred thousand dollars a year more than the county is paying us today. And why wouldn't we do that?
Yes, sir. Certainly the board could provide direction and we would then figure out how to implement that, that direction with an update to the policy. And then, um, identifying the appropriate resources to do the same. They said, I think it self-corrects. If they, if they are in. If they are very simple, then it should be very inexpensive to, to hire someone to do that.
Because all we have to do is give them a forecast of our cash flow needs and what our balance is beginning and.
But yes, you remember that slide from the, um, the slide that showed the four or five. Given the lumpy nature. So we have a monthly forecast that is well-informed based on the inflows and the lumpy nature of our revenues and and outflows as well.
So, I mean, because you're only investing in one kind of thing, right? And if it turns out that you were wrong and you need an extra million dollars, you sell a million dollars from the treasuries that are really short-term and you got all your money back. It's not a problem.
So if I may suggest, should the board have an interest in doing that? And I think an informal discussion would be helpful amongst the board members. It, it would be.
Yeah, I, I mean, looking at this and, you know, I'm, I'm pretty conservative and I'm. Been taking my fiduciary responsibility of, for the community, um, I, I wouldn't be in favor of, of leaving the Contra Costa Investment Pool. But I, I certainly would be in favor of, um. Of taking the option to direct an accounting to purchase investments. We can get that same treasury bill investment three months, you know, through them.
If we can, that's fine. If, if we, if we can actually say, I want you to buy these, this duration treasuries and we get all the benefit of it, that's great.
It seems like we should at least ask that question.
Right. As long as we can direct what they're going to buy and and they actually buy the right things at the right time, i- if you're right, it ought to be the same.
And it shouldn't be har- high charge, right? I mean, I would.
But if they're doing, how can they be earning that much less?
Um, okay. So right, so right, the county try, uh, charges thirty-three basis points, but it's based on the interest earnings. It's not on the asset, the value of the asset. So it is a nominal fee that the county charges.
Thirty-three, say that again.
Point three.
They charge you thirty-three basis points on the interest earnings.
So what is that?
A third of a percent. It's a third of a percent.
A third of a percent, but only on the interest. So they charge a third of a percent of what is today five percent. So it's not, it's not subtracting a third of a percent. Well, I guess it is, it is doing that. So they just charged thirty, thirty-five bips for your. Yeah, for the fee.
So if you were getting four percent, you're getting three point seven.
Right. Again, I would query if that's all true and they're doing this for themselves and they're doing eighty-five percent of it in treasuries. Why are their returns roughly half of what the markets are?
That, that requires correction. It's eighty-five percent of the county treasury investment pool.
Oh, okay.
Not eighty-five percent in treasuries. They're, they're using the term in two different.
And treasuries are by definition the most, I mean, any company in the country can invest in U S treasuries. I mean, that, that meets everybody's guidelines, right? Short-term treasuries need everybody's guidelines.
What I would recommend, if there is interest in pursuing this, if we could identify an ad hoc committee of the board, which we could. To whom we could provide interim feedback in, if we are able to advance more rapidly than a monthly board cycle, then that, that sub, that. Ad hoc committee can bring back a report from the full board at a later regular meeting.
Right.
But in, in, in the meantime, do you need direction from us though, as to?
As I understand it, uh, the direction I've received, I believe I've received from the board is to explore the opportunities for more direct investment options through the county treasury. And it would be helpful if there was a ad hoc committee with whom we could communicate on this, so that when we didn't have to wait. A thirty-day cycle in the regular board meetings for more interim direction and provide feedback as we receive it.
Great.
Uh, Chloe and I have, have a question. If we were to do this, does the money to invest come from our reserves?
Yes, that's what we'd be investing, right?
They, they, they require that you invest a hundred percent of your money with them. Today.
But we, but we would decide how much money. We'll say a million, two million.
Yes, sir. I should clarify that all of our reserves, uh, we don't keep bags of cash by station. Yeah, that all of our money resides in the county treasury. Yeah. And the county treasury then invests it rather than it just sitting. And this would be, the direction would be to direct the county staff to invest our funds in something such as liquid treasury.
And, and the, the board makes a decision, three months, six months, who makes that decision?
The, the board provides general direction, the actual investment decision, uh, the, the execution resides in staff.
Well, but, but the philosophy about you want to invest in, because people have ladders and things, you know, so. You could be more aggressive and say, hey, we don't really need the money, you know, we don't need all the money certainly in, until the last month. But that doesn't necessarily mean you want to invest in longer-term securities, because those have.
Yeah.
More volatility. You could invest all of it in short-term things and just keep rolling it over. That's a much conservative thing to do.
Much like the board has done with the O P E V and the pension stabilization trust fund, where the board has directed the, the general allocation. We don't want to see, uh, I think it was foreign growth stocks we, we backed out of two years ago or so. So that, that would be the sort of direction that the board could provide and then staff would work to execute that direction via, as a candidate.
We could say, by the way, as an example, we're only going to let you invest in three month treasuries.
What, what? What you would probably want to do, uh, once you've kind of worked this through is. Investment policy similar to the, the policies you have about other kinds of investments, like what you're doing with your one fifteen. Uh, plans. So, um, but it sounds to me like, and it seems like a logical idea. Chief is suggesting that you appoint an ad hoc committee, uh, to work with staff to work through some of these things before we bring it back to the board. So maybe, uh, I guess the question really is who wants to serve on that committee? Assuming that's what you want to do.
Greg, do you want to do that? I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to have other people volunteer. I'm, you know, I, I don't. I don't need to do that.
I think Greg should be on it.
I'm really happy to be on it. Somebody else wants to be on it.
Have you too?
No, I would really appreciate it, the two of you. Especially since I'm going to be out of the. Okay. We have one hand raised.
Jonathan, Jonathan Goodwin.
Uh, please correct me if I'm wrong. I seem to remember another time when the teeter plan was used. Cover payroll. Because the district didn't have the money to cover payroll that month. So, you know, using it for the. You know, fuel break grant and stuff, that's not all that. I don't know, adrenaline producing. But when you can't make payroll, boy, it's, it's a big deal. So my suggestion is that if at a later time, the board moves toward. Actually going against, uh, Director Danziger's sentiments. And bailing out from the, the county investment pool, that you set up some sort of compensatory policy. So that if something serious like that were to happen, you'd be able to somehow or through some other means. Uh, get money to make payroll. Thank you.
Yeah, the good news is we can use the pension stabilization trust fund if things get that bad to pay the pension costs, which would free up enough money to make payroll. But yes.
Okay. We have one more hand raised. Vince Wells.
Yeah, um. Uh, directors, Vince Wells, President Firefighters Local Two Thirty. Hey, I would like to, I, I think. Uh, making a major change of leaving the current system. And go into another system and getting out of the teeter plan. I. I am not sure, but I would raise the question of whether that's a. Subject of bargaining prior to making that decision to do that. We have certain board members that are very educated in. The investment process and, um. But, you know, our board, um, doesn't necessarily require a whole lot of. Education in some of these subjects, so. I, I would want to sit down and have a conversation with. Um, some representatives of the board of directors to have an understanding of the risk. Um, that we would be taking, um, with le- leaving that system and. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
By the way, is another reason why having large reserves is a good thing. Which John Jackson's been a big name banner for a long time. Which is why we need to talk about the seventy percent.
One of the, I was going to just say, the, uh, here plan is, is sort of the. Blender, the last resort, because what you have to do on the, the teeter plan to, to draw is you have to pay down. All of your debt cash, including everything that's in the capital fund, every fund you have. So you have to basically liquidate all your cash. And then you can borrow. And so hope you'll never have to do that again.
Right.
Okay. Guess we're nine point five insurance coverage.
At the February board meeting, the board requested an agenda item to discuss directors and officers' insurance. Since twenty thirteen, the district has been a member of the fire agency's risk authority, which we call FARA. The district obtains a variety of insurance coverage through FARA, including property coverage, automobile liability, management liability. Which includes directors and officers, um, and umbrella coverage up to ten million dollars. Detailed insurance information was included in the board packet tonight. The FARA premium for the current year is one hundred forty-four thousand dollars. FARA does not offer customized insurance coverage, so the district is unable to purchase additional coverage through FARA. FARA also does not offer increased deductible options. According to the FARA executive director, years ago, FARA did offer increased induct, increased deductible options. And only a handful of districts took advantage of it. And it's because there was not much savings unless the deductible was increased to fifty thousand or a hundred thousand dollars. And most agencies felt if you had two to three claims with a higher deductible like that, that it really wasn't cost effective. Staff request for direction regarding district insurance coverage. This concludes the staff report.
Greg, so, so I, you know, do we put this out to bid? Because there are definitely alternatives.
Right. So we looked at that. So no, the, the staff at the time did not put it out to bid.
So, you know, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar premium, which is a big insurance premium. Um, and I know we have a lot of assets, um, the D N O insurance and all that. I don't know whether D N O insurance is more expensive for this sort of an organization or not, but. You know, the, the, the other insurance must be really expensive. And usually when you, your car, if you have a zero deductible. Um, yeah, it's really expensive. So, but have we looked into the, I sent your link to the, the other one? Did we look into that one?
Uh, no, yes. No, we, if the, the direction of the board is to explore other options, we can certainly engage in a, a process of finding out what other options are out there. And investing, uh, investing the time it would take to run those down. Uh, so we do need board direction if that's what we want to do. And I, I only offer that up because. Uh, these things do become pretty time-consuming when we go start finding out what are other options are out there. We've been using this one for a long time, obviously. Maybe a good time to, to revisit it, uh, but we wanted to have an understanding from the board. If beyond the discussion of D N O, uh, which was the topic it was at for, if there's a further interest in revisiting. How we, uh, receive our insurance. Prior to this, we were in a pooled county-run system. So we've essentially been in, um. This system or the predecessor, very similar system since the district's inception. Uh, so this has been a steady as she goes, status quo sort of thing, but we could certainly, we could, if the board is interested in identifying what are their options out there, we could. We can engage in finding out who uses what other, um, offerings and whether or not they're more competitive. My general sense, without having invested much time into this, i- is that, uh, they're all very similar because they all have similar risk profile and they're all. Um, pooled so that there isn't profit, uh, there's no profit, but the, the contributors. Um, experienced losses, which are paid out of the pool, and that sets the premium and those losses are, are generally pretty equal, um, depending on. Because the pools are all very similar.
So there's not a company that makes money on this? It's, it's literally a, a.
It, it's, we, it's a pooled the risk. We're all, we're all contributing members to it.
Is it all government?
They're all government. They're all government participants.
Right, but, you know, you could say the same thing about cars. And if we have a hundred times as many accidents as the next guy. We, we're going to get the advantage. And if we have a tenth the number of accidents, we're going to be paying for their rates. But I guess the question I had is, you know, they have like mutual insurance companies. You actually all own it. There isn't a, an entity that makes a profit. You know, you, you get back dividends. And so it's literally shared, shared premiums and shared risk. But I don't think that's what this is. I think this is actually a company.
Do we get a refund at the end of the, I think the question is, do you get a refund at the end of the year?
So we haven't gotten a refund before now.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, the, these, these, uh, and I don't know about FARA in particular, but I, I know about insurance pools. Uh, these JPAs, the JPAs do reinsure to be, I mean, there are, there are private actors like Keenan. Uh, et cetera, that are behind a lot of the JPAs. I don't know that that's true for this particular one. So it's a, it's a little complicated in that respect. They usually use some kind of reinsurance as well.
But normally with insurance, you send them your deck page and, uh, and say, what does it cost to buy this insurance for our. You know, for our system, you know, you, you know, how many various kinds of assets you have, what they're all worth. And, uh, and, and they, you know, it, it literally takes twenty minutes to make the phone call.
Do we have any, I was going to say, do we have any information on what the premium was the prior year? I mean, it's one forty-four, like steady state or are we going?
No, it's gone up over the last couple of years because, and they say it's because of the insurance market, the costs have gone up and so forth. And so, yeah, we, I mean, we've have, we know what we paid for it every year since twenty thirteen.
Have we ever filed claims?
Yes, we have.
How, I mean, frequency and how much?
So it, um, it varies. So in twenty twenty-two, we had three claims. In twenty twenty-one, we had one claim, but in twenty twenty, we had seven claims. So it's just kind of, so the average is about three claims a year.
What kind of money? Big money, little money?
I don't know. Mostly, let's see, it looks like this is mostly vehicle. I don't know. Mostly, let's see, it looks like this is mostly vehicle. It mostly had to do with vehicles.
If you change the policy, is there a limit on items that may have been already in motion?
You mean if we left FARA?
Yeah, if we left FARA.
I don't know. I didn't ask.
Okay.
So if, if I made, uh, FARA is a JPA that is, uh, created, managed by the fire district chiefs, fire directors. Fair joint powers authority is owned entirely by participating fire protection districts and agencies and function solely for the benefit. So there isn't, uh, there isn't a problem entity other than any reinsurance. Uh, where FARA is buying coverage to spread some of that risk. The Board of Directors is either, um. Is fire chiefs or, uh, risk managers associated with fire departments.
Wow, okay. So, but that doesn't mean, that means that entity might not make money, but it doesn't mean that they aren't paying a bunch of money to a reinsurer that's making a lot of money.
Absolutely, who's obviously very hedging, uh, with reinsurance. And reinsurance is not cheap in public.
So our recoveries, would they equal our premium?
I don't know.
Don't know.
Well, you know, the DNO part of it's worth, uh.
Yeah, it's a very small part of it.
Three or four thousand dollars, it's small.
Yeah, you know, our, our claims and our coverage costs are primarily associated with vehicles. We operate large, complex vehicles in a manner that causes accidents because no matter what you're doing, you're operating an emergency vehicle, you're in an increase and emergency scenes, you're in increased risk of an accident because you're operating them in conditions that, that lend themselves to, to more exposure. Um, so we could find out, but I don't think DNO is gonna be the primary driver.
But we don't have, do we have, um, liability if we hit another car on the way to, to an emergency, for example?
We do.
Really? In Chicago, they don't. Uh, you know, if you drive over a car, and you know, oh, I'm sorry, we weren't on the way to an emergency, you know, we're done.
Yeah, we, we, we have liability if we, we strike that vehicle.
Interesting.
Okay.
Other news is more expensive.
Any other things? Of course. Yeah, public comments.
We do not have any hands raised.
Okay. You have.
So if I could ask for clarification, so the, the report was provided to give more information about our DNO, uh, at forward's request. I, I assume that is satisfied.
So we have a total of what, eleven million for DNO?
Well, I'm, okay, I was told the total coverage is ten million dollars. For the, under the umbrella piece of the insurance.
But isn't there an underlying amount? Usually umbrellas are on top of whatever the base amount is. Isn't there a million dollars in the base?
No, they, they told me, they, they told me the total coverage is ten million dollars.
Okay. Um, that's not much for, you know, it. If we drive over cars on a regular basis and we get sued on a regular basis, which we do, uh, and several of us prior boards at least have been sued individually. Now, it's true, you guys, you know, cover the bills for that, but, um. That's not a lot of DNO insurance. And since DNO insurance is cheap, I would feel better having a, the other organizations I'm involved with that are a lot smaller than this have a lot more DNO insurance than that, at least fifteen million. Which probably isn't expensive.
Uh, we'll certainly find out. I think the second question is, is there interest from the board in a subsequent agenda item, which would be, um, that we would, we pursue what our other options are. I, I would ask that we um, if it's more than a, a fleeting desire, we'll certainly take the board's direction, but these things do impose a, a tax and a cost as far as staff availability and staff time uh, for the other things that, that are keeping us busy. So if there's interest, we certainly take the board's direction. I'd pursue it, but I would ask that, that interest be because we think there's something we can do better or we'd like more information about how to do our insurance.
I guess I would just ask that we at least spend the twenty minutes and, you know, call the other company and say, here's what our situation is, you know. Wh- what do you, if it's gonna be a long process, we have to send them lots of data, maybe not. But you, you could at least have them give you an estimate of what it's gonna cost.
And, and there's no way to change, right, our policy? Cause if you book, pull up the policy, it says the DNO limits a million. Management liability employment practice and DNO is a million dollars.
Right, but then there's there's a ten million. Right, they called an excess follow form liability coverage, which was explained to me that that's umbrella coverage. And then that is up to nine million dollars.
Of additional. Okay, got it, okay.
It's a weird number to pick, but okay. Okay, so the only thing I would do is, oh, and they won't offer you something other than ten nine?
Uh, so correct, so we cannot get additional covers through FARA. So I think we need more clarification. So do you want additional DNO covers through something else?
I misunderstood that you couldn't get anything other than that through that, okay. Probably not.
Okay. Want to item nine point six standards of coverage report?
Evening directors. At the February twenty twenty-three regular board meeting, a director asked for information regarding the process for updating the district standards of cover report. Since its founding in nineteen ninety-seven, the district has had two standards of cover reports. The first was published in two thousand and six and it was updated in two thousand and sixteen. The links are provided to both of those reports, which are available on our webpage. Uh, listed there from attachment A of the, uh, attachment A, which is the twenty sixteen report. The last district standards of cover report was produced two thousand and six. The purpose for completing this documentation is to assist the district to ensure a safe and effective response force for fire suppression, emergency medical services, homeland security and specialized response situations. It then goes on to explain the specified methodology that was used to complete the report and explains uh, the five steps that were taken to compile the report in accordance with the CFAI manuals. There's a link to, uh, the standard against which this report was compared or prepared in two thousand and sixteen is included at the end of the first page. Uh, for, uh, reference, the city of Berkeley is in the final stages of a SOC report, which provides an opportunity to benchmark the time, expense and staff effort required to complete such a project. Copy of the Berkeley Fire Department Request for Proposals is attached to the attachment B for the district, the board's reference. Uh, this contract was awarded to City Gates Associates for a one hundred thousand dollar cost has been underway for approximately one year and in process review was provided last April and is included, uh, at the link. Given MOFD's smaller size, it's reasonable to assume a similar study would be less expensive and require less time to be completed for us, however. Uh, these savings may be offset due to inflationary pressures that have increased the, the cost of doing report as well as there are some baseline costs associated with data collection that would be the same regardless of the, uh, of a district size. Um, should the district, uh, should the board desire to proceed with updating the SOC? A staff will have inside of the twenty twenty-four budget and we'll go through the initial stages to determine we have a price range so that we could accurately reflect the cost of conducting a report. Um, should the board, uh, desire to update the twenty sixteen standards of cover. I should say specifically to the, the question that was raised, um, reporting out of closed session, the twenty sixteen, uh, report is largely silent on staffing. The two thousand and six report does make recommendations on staffing, however, that report is now eighteen years old. Uh, it's probably not as relevant, given the many changes to the district's, uh, response, the size of the population, the number of responses and the nature of the responses that have occurred during that. Be happy to answer any questions that the board may have or take direction.
Comments? Well, I, um, Chris Eric and Dan Ziger, I'm, you know, and just in looking at this, um. My understanding that, um, these type of reports stands as a coverage reports are done approximately every ten years, um, fairly expensive. Um, in looking at the twenty sixteen report, um, I, I, I don't see many significant changes myself. And so I, I kind of feel it's premature to do this at this time. That's, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
I, I think it's, you know, one of the major things that we talked about, and I think it was the November meeting, Director Jordan, um, was the, um. You know, it, it had to do with staffing and the kinds of staffing you need and the kinds of equipment you need and uh, you know, our, I think our, our district has changed quite a bit since two thousand and, when did you say it was six? When you did the first one? And, and I think, you know, the staffing's gone up and down since then. And I, I think we've changed the MOU a certain amount since then. So, and the population's gone up and the district's gotten bigger. There are a lot of things that have meaning, more people moved in. And geographically gotten, you know, people in the boundary did get bigger, more people moved to various parts of the place. So, uh, and I think that is one thing that we, um. We found missing, uh, in our discussion, uh, about the change in staffing, for example. And so I think this is exactly the right tool that we need to have to actually have an informed discussion about, uh, things that you know, our, our, uh, union employees are very concerned about. And we might as well have an outsider tell us how, you know, gi- give us some professional advice and some benchmarking of how other community, you know, what, what the appropriate levels are, appropriate response times. Uh, you know, maybe ours are good, maybe ours aren't as good, who knows? But, cause we don't have any current data to show that. So, uh, I think my microphone died, but, um. I think the, uh, I, I think we should go ahead and do this, make support to do it and do it fairly quickly. And I think there are some, um. There's another company, I, I heard of the one you mentioned on this one, but I think there's one that's based in San Diego, I believe. Uh, that we talked to maybe six years ago, briefly, before your time, uh, about, um. About doing this kind of thing. So I think there are a number of companies that do this sort of thing.
Yes, sir, there, there are a number of providers. City Gates had the politic in this area and had done one that we, the jurisdiction with whom we share a word.
Greg. Do we have an idea of how much one would cost, I guess, is the question? And can we request specific things be covered such as staffing? So you said the two thousand and sixteen didn't cover it. So can we put those parameters in it?
Yes, sir. The standards cover is, um. It's a bucket which many chains can be poured and if there are specific areas of interest that could absolutely be directed. As I mentioned, Berkeley's was about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, it's reasonable to assume ours might be a little less, but prices may have gone up in the last year. So, um, somewhere in that range, up or down, maybe twenty percent, it was probably a reasonable range for, for what such a thing.
And, and how long did it take Berkeley to, to get theirs?
It's, uh, they, it's been underway for over a year.
Okay.
It seems like a long lead.
Yeah, that, that's a problem. A long time.
So Director Jex, I, uh, I looked at the Berkeley, uh, report and found it very helpful and interesting in terms of understanding. So I think there's some benefit to keep in it current.
I think you actually told us in the last meeting, this one is technically expired, right? That there only theoretically, uh.
Strategic plan, which was aligned to twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one, the five year. So, um, the, the SOC itself doesn't have a, a sell by date. Uh, however, the data is increasingly stale as you move farther out from the twenty fifteen timeframe in the data story.
So was that, you found it interesting, so you would think.
Yes. I would certainly, your acaroma would certainly appreciate the information if we can obtain it at a reasonable cost.
And at a reasonable time.
Yeah, reasonable timeframe.
Correct, yeah.
Sounds like roughly the amount of money we could save by investing our money more like.
That's true. Okay, um.
Would you like to invite comments?
Public comment? Two hands.
Daniel Abana.
Uh, good evening, Board of Directors and Staff. Uh, my name is Dan Albana, twelve thirty, I'm the representative. I'd just like to say that in the previous two, two thousand and six and two thousand and sixteen, here on our coverage, the, the number one recommendation was to staff medic forty-five, a designated firefighter paramedics. Um, since then, in both those reports, our call volume has gone up, population has gone up. Um, so I see no change in what the recommendation could potentially be. And as far as referencing back what might come from the Berkeley one and previous information needed in the November. Things stated pretty clearly that the cost savings with having single role medics, uh, was not uh, it did not make sense when you're able to get the higher service with firefighter paramedics. Um, so I, I, you know, it's not a big cost of doing these, but the delay in having a decision made on nineteen staffing and staffing medic forty-five, uh, with firefighter paramedics with how long it takes us to, uh, hire and go through the interview process and everything. And we just lost one guy in the academy. As you heard, it's a very long process and a further delay now in starting that process and giving our citizens the best service that their tax dollars should go to. Um, I think is, is, is inappropriate. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
Jonathan Goodwin.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment about the quality of the previous two reports and I trust that fire chief will, uh, not hesitate to correct me if I'm wrong about this. Um, these were written by two fire chiefs in their spare time. Not by an independent body. And in some sense, they represent a wish list of what these people, uh, thought. You know, things should look like. And that was a reflection of their particular strengths and inadequacies and influences and so on and so on. Um. So, I personally, um, feel that the district has matured to a point where there's just a bunch of different stress factors in play here. And that having a document like this, if it was well done, I, I haven't looked at the Berkeley one though. Oh, uh, plan to do that. Um, but if it was well done, would lay out what the choices are, cause I don't think the board's gonna come to a good decision on its own. For instance, regarding this twelve, sorry, seventeen nineteen staffing. I just don't think the board is gonna have a good conversation with the, uh, I could be wrong, you know, but with, with the membership, you know, I mean, it's just fraught. Um, the board is kind of at a hamstring in these things anyway, because you're constrained in these board meetings where, that have this particular format. And you're also constrained by your own level of operational knowledge, such as was, uh, uh, brought up earlier, which is fair enough. I mean, that's just the structure of the thing. But I think having a, for the first time, a professional look at a time when things are, like I said, there's just stressed. You know, these stresses have to be, it's okay to have stresses if you have a structure that's built to, just to, to handle that. You know, that's what structure is for. And to be clear about that, I really think you need a perspective beyond what you're getting from the board, beyond what you're getting from staff who is, you know, doing what staff does, but it really doesn't extend out. Their expertise doesn't extend out as presumably as much as, uh, you know, what you might get from paying a whole bunch of money. Um, so I, to me, it, it, it the, the pendulum swings toward, um. Uh, you know, the, the pendulum indicates that the, the right direction to, to go is to have a real serious look at this time and not put it off for a few years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Jonathan.
Vincent Wells.
Yeah, good evening, Board members. Um, Vince Wells, President of Local Twelve Thirty. Yeah, I, um. Just wanted to kind of put it, uh, the, make the point kind of back, uh, with, uh, Captain Dan Abano, who's a rep for the um, for the marketer in the fire district, we when we agreed to the down staffing of medic forty-five, I wouldn't say agreed to it, but it was during economic concerns about where the community was financially. And the need to reduce staffing for financial reasons, it was never a conversation as to reducing the staffing because it was unnecessary. When this conversation came up, uh, prior to the board change, um, we talked about having a meet confer and I think that board agreed to move forward with working to reestablish the staffing of that, um, second permanently staffed ambulance out of, which we know as medic forty-five. That was the plan. We only reduced it due to financial cons- um, constraints at the time. And so we're asking, just as those who know, um, in Confire, there were stations closed. And the city of Pinole, East Country Costa, many agencies were forced to shut and shutter stations due to, um, the economy during that, uh, um. Economic downturn. So we're asking, and, and I don't understand why in the, one of the Economic downturn. So we're asking, and and I don't understand why in the one of the most affluent areas in the county. That had the minimal minimal impact to the financial impacts of. You know, the housing market crash that we're having to now do a study or even discuss doing a study to reestablish. A um an ambulance that was in service. And it was only reduced due to the fact that um. Uh the economic concerns. We made concessions as a labor group. Um adjusted our pay to cuts. And now. When the Fire District is even considering paying cash for. You know, station construction, increasing money into pitching obligation, um stabilization funds and all the things that we were doing. To prepare for the impact of this ever happening again, that we can't get. That ambulance back in service. I mean, the ambulance serves the community, and that's the purpose of the Fire District. Is to serve the community. And that's the reason that the folks pay taxes is not to invest and not to make more money. It is to provide service to the community. So. I just want to reiterate that to say that a standard of coverage, if you want to do that, but that should not. Have any impact on the restoration plans of um bringing that ambulance back in service. And I would hope that the board would move forward with. That process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
We do not have any more hands raised.
Okay.
So do we have any further discussions? So I move that we uh prove going forward with the uh. Standards of coverage study that you can bring back to us, the bids and that sort of thing. But you know, we should be able willing to spend up to. Typically not a hundred thousand dollars, but we might we have to put a cap on it someplace, I guess.
Uh this is Director Roma. I will second that motion. Have person second any discussion?
So we need to invite comment on the motion? We do not have any hands raised.
Okay. I'm gonna have a.
Director Dan Ziger.
No.
Director Hasler.
Yes.
Director Jorgens.
Yes.
Director Romer.
Yes.
Director Jex.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, we move on to. Nine point seven.
Evening, directors. At the October twenty twenty two M O F D board meeting, a director requested information regarding a local residency and veterans hiring preference. At the November twenty twenty two M O F D board meeting, an agenda item was approved, which outlined a veterans and residency residency hiring preference policy for new hires. Staff updated the proposed policy to remove the local resident portion of the hiring preference policy on advice of council. Which is included as and the proposals include as attached in the sex proposed veterans hiring preference policy will be based upon the following criteria. Which is demonstrated eligibility from having served in one of the armed forces continuously on active duty for more than a hundred and eighty days or being a disabled veteran. And having received a discharge or release from active duty under honorable conditions. And have completed open recruitment or examination process. And then having submitted the appropriate documentary evidence and achieved at least a minimum passing final examination score. Meet all other qualifications for placement on the eligibility list. Uh the proposed policy would result in applicants who receive who met all the requirements could receive. Five additional points added to their final examination score limited to entry level recruitments. Uh this is was last discussed in uh November of twenty twenty two, obviously preceding the appointment or election of several of the board members. The proposal is something the board can make post, can make amendments to. Staff will take that direction if there are any changes. Members of the board would like to see to this policy, we could receive that uh input, we could make the changes, and we could bring this back. Uh for the board's um adoption or review and adoption at a subsequent meeting. That behalf of answering questions that was a board meeting.
So I think one of the alternatives we talked about at some point along the way was, you know. Our objective, I'm sure, is we always want to have the best possible, and and we obviously have terrific people already, so we want to maintain our, you know. The best possible staffing that we could have, and I'm all in favor of giving them, you know, the the you know. The benefit of um if if it's a tie, the tie goes to the veteran. But it seems to me that giving. You know, giving an extra benefit, you know, that says you're gonna turn down somebody that got a better score. Uh I I would rather leave it at, you know, the tie goes to the to the veteran myself. And we can do more recruiting of veterans. That's great. You know, I I'm happy to be proactive in that respect. That's terrific.
Other comments?
Yeah, this is Director Dan Ziger. Um I fully support this resolution as written. Um and I'm proud that the board's even considering this. Um. I know that um. Uh policies like this are uh um occur in 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 many other jurisdictions uh where I used to work um and and other ones I was in H R. Um I know it, I know it occurs. Um and um. I think recognizing the uh. The service to our country by um by veterans is 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 important for this district and to show our support. And I think the. I think it's shown that uh veterans, uh especially in in public safety. Uh are exemplary uh candidates usually, and I think they deserve this.
Other comments?
I guess I would hope that all of those better characteristics would be able to be determined as part of their. Process of being hired rather than having to give them extra points to get there.
Yeah, this is Director Romer. My general impression is is that I know it is really difficult to hire uh folks. Uh it's a long process. So. You know, I I want the uh department to be able to hire the the best hard work, the most hardworking people, the most courageous. Um the most conscientious, and I think uh I I do support Director Dan Zinger's initiative. To reach out to the veterans community, because I think in many instances, uh veterans do exhibit all of those. Qualifications and those characteristics. But I do think it's important to maintain a certain amount of flexibility in the hiring process. So I would also feel that it should be a tiebreaker. Um. But I don't know that I want to tie the human resources and the hiring process to a point system.
My question is the scoring. How does the scoring occur? Um just for my for background and what the five points go towards. Is it a objective? List of criteria that are met to which they get five points, or is it a subjective?
It it's inherently subjective, so we use um the elements that were objective specifically having to do with physical ability and agility. Have been standardized and are now outsourced, whether you have passed or you have not passed, and that's a requirement to apply. Is to have completed the CPAT physical agility. Uh internally, we have initially, we have a screening of uh the applicant to ensure they're qualified. Then those who pass that are invited to an interview board. Those who pass the interview board are then brought forward to a paramedic skills assessment. Uh but the the interview board is the the is primary.
Is where the five points would be added to the score that comes from.
That because the tie breaking. Beyond that is is largely uh well, there wouldn't there wouldn't be a tie breaking beyond that. So it would end just to be clear that we're, I just make sure this is understood. The policy as written, which certainly can be amended, uh does state, however, you have to achieve a minimum score before the points are being provided. So. If you were below our our threshold, uh preference points would not be enough to raise you to a passing score.
But if if it's if it's an interview board. Wouldn't all the good characteristics that the veterans have have shown up in that analysis anyway?
But I I'm highly confident that our our current process identifies the best and most fully qualified applicants for the the job and that. Those characteristics are are things that would um. People who have our 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 hiring process is is has been very effective at selecting great firefighters and uh. I have a great degree of confidence in in how our interview panel will.
And how is our process at hiring veterans? I mean, do we have?
We have two. Um I I'm one of them, and I was hired in. Uh the end of seventeen where this would not apply, and the other is Jerry Lee, who I think was hired twenty years ago. Uh so we.
We haven't been very successful. I mean, I I think we should give them preference because they've served us, right? They've been they and they are brave and valiant people. Um I don't. I don't understand, still don't understand quite how the five points work. I mean, do you give them a score of a hundred? Is that a possible score of a hundred?
It's not a five hundred.
It's out of five hundred. So it's a.
Points added to your your score so that you would potentially be elevated.
By 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 a minor amount.
You create a list.
Yeah, okay.
Right, and then from the list, we prioritize who. So there's there's a. There's a pass, no pass. We we folks, we we.
Yeah.
Do not think to be great firefighters are not put on the list. That that's a hard task. Of those who are on the list, we believe all of them would be great firefighters, but some would be greater greater depending on how either they have a list. And then those are the folks who are prioritized for the paramedic assessment, for backgrounds, uh for the physicals, for the ride alongs, the the five call. Uh so there's a there's a prioritization of who we're moving through, but this would this would not change under any proposal. Would not change the folks that that we didn't think would be great.
And how often would we have a tie? I'm just curious, right? Between, I mean.
We haven't had one in five years.
Yeah. Um I mean, my 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 recollection, just thinking through this, is the five points is a positive gesture. Um and I don't know that it really. It it shows our commitment to a preference, but it doesn't, I don't think skew anything. And it's probably, it's a little more than just saying. More than a tie. We don't ever have a tie, so maybe it provides some additional benefit. So.
So it's a one percent difference.
It's a one percent. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's it's a it's. Very small, but it 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 shows the commitment.
Well, if we haven't had one in that length of time, is it because they're really not? Available? I mean, we're looking for some, are we looking for?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're looking for someone that doesn't exist.
Our because of our staffing model, we're tremendously poorly positioned to deal E M T firefighters. There's a ripple effect. Um that really clogs up the pipes. And so as a result of that, we only hire firefighter paramedics. We previously only hired firefighter. Sorry, we previously only hired firefighter paramedics, people who've been to a firefighter academy and were a paramedic and had one year of frontline nine one one experience. The hiring pools have significantly tightened over the last several years as other departments hired and everyone uh restaffed from the. The generations of firefighters they didn't hire during the Great Recession. So uh in response to that, we've dropped the firefighter one requirement. We've dropped the year of nine one one frontline uh paramedic experience. And we've increased the level of scrutiny we apply through our internal paramedic assessment. And we rely on a firefighter one academy where we send all of our recruits to weed out folks who don't have residency for the firefighting portions of the job. However, uh many departments in our area uh do not require paramedic to hire E M Ts, or in the case of some of the larger departments, they don't require E M T. They'll take someone essentially off the street, and the academy includes an E M T portion, and their systems are large enough. And um have don't have an ambulance, ALS ambulance transport component that we have. Therefore, they can absorb firefighter E M Ts. And so an E M T course can be gotten as short as two weeks. Uh paramedicine requires having been an E M T, having worked as an E M T, and then having gone to the schooling process that did at least a year. The accelerated program, generally speaking, at least a year. By the time a uh a desirable person such as a veteran who many agencies seek to hire. By the time a desirable candidate has had enough time as a firefighter candidate to have completed all of those events. Um. They've had several opportunities potentially to get hired somewhere else. So then we either need someone who was committed to becoming a paramedic because they love paramedicine, or someone. Who was already a paramedic when they decided to become a firefighter, or someone who had a particular affinity for Mariner in the Fire District. Before they they made it to us, if you will. So part of the reason we're not seeing these folks is that they're getting picked up along the way by other agencies who don't have the same hiring criteria that we.
So so maybe our fundamental problem is not that we need to give a preference here, is that we need to change some of our other hiring targets.
Well, it's not necessarily, it's more of a staffing model that requires. Because of the the ambulance staffing, which is staffed by firefighters, if we have an E M T firefighter. Uh they can't work on the ambulance in our current model, and then there's a ripple from it's pretty significant from a staffing ripple when we have a firefighter E T. So. The the underlying issue is that we run essentially an all paramedic system. And as a result of that, we've been only hiring paramedics. The paramedics um are are hard to come by in the current environment.
So maybe that's something that needs to get covered in our standards of coverage.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Because it sounds to me like we have a fundamental challenge in our hiring process and in the requirements of what our people have to do. That is potentially making us pass up super talented people and, you know, and we know it's a really sticky type of job. You know, people go there and spend their whole career at one place. So if we miss them early, we're just missing.
Yes, I should say, I I should be careful that I I don't um give credit to. It is a very competitive hiring environment. Uh I don't hear it, and many surrounding agencies are hiring large numbers of people, which increases competition for the resource, a scarce resource of great.
Yeah. I I don't personally, I mean, if it. We all want to hire veterans. It's great. You know, if if it makes it easy for everybody to say, leave the five points in, it doesn't matter.
See, direction board, I believe I'm hearing the direction is the policy as as written uh would be acceptable to the board.
Yeah.
So uh that's open to public comment?
Jonathan Goodwin.
Yeah, I'm curious why the uh residential preference was dropped on advice of council. Uh seems to me that people who are committed to the area. Committed to their neighbors, uh area familiarization, so on and so on. Uh what why was that scrubbed?
On advice of council.
Well, what was the advice?
That it should be dropped.
Because what was the reason for that to say for that advice?
I I defer to counsel.
So um Jonathan's John John Holtzman, uh district council. So um. It goes without saying that um it in in a public meeting, I'm not going to disclose attorney client privilege advice. Uh but I I would say um. I would say this um. Having local preferences requires um all kinds of uh evidence. Uh uh to sustain them. Uh and um it's very challenging in an environment where you have um two very small. Two very small towns. Um and so uh it it isn't to say it can't be done, uh but it's challenging legally. And uh so a policy judgment was made uh that uh given the like the the. The fact that it's not very likely to be very effective as a tool of having people live in the area uh that uh the decision was made to drop it.
Is that you're saying you're afraid of legal challenges to this policy? Is that what?
I'm saying there are legal concerns, yes, and that it would it takes a lot to uh to justify a a local hiring preference, you know, particularly in a very, very small town.
Well, I mean, other other agencies do this, right? I mean.
Some, look, some other agencies, not very many, but some have this.
Thank you for your comment, Jonathan.
Don't mention it.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay. So I think we don't need to.
I just wanted to say that I I believe that this policy does represent. The generally accepted uh policies for hiring veterans that are found in most jurisdictions who have this kind of policy. I think it's the right thing to do, and uh. I hope that we support it.
Does that mean you're moving to do it?
Uh I would make a motion to uh. To uh adopt resolution twenty three dash oh three.
I'll second it. Jorgens.
Thank you.
Smooth and seconded.
We need to invite comment on the motion.
Do we have any public comment on the motion?
We do not have any comment on the motion.
Want to take a vote?
Director Dan Ziger.
Aye.
Director Hasler.
Yes.
Director Jorgens.
Yes.
Director Romer.
Aye.
Director Jex.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're down to committee reports. Uh on the audit committee, I'll. Okay, I guess we're down to committee reports, uh, on the audit committee, I'll, I'll report and Greg, if you have anything else to add. Uh, we met earlier this afternoon and, um, he reviewed the six, uh, proposals that have been received by the district. Narrowed it down to two that we are going to have further discussions with. And, uh, hopefully have that done in the next two weeks.
That's great. I know we all had concerns about how many, uh, how many firms would, uh, would, would, uh, respond, uh, to our, our thing.
Orion has twisted their arm.
Yeah.
That's good. Good job.
No, you, you, maybe, maybe we can say that they, that we have more interest in us. I don't know.
Definitely the board.
It's Orion's.
Yeah.
Char.
I know that's it. Okay.
Okay. So any other reports ad hoc committee?
Ad hoc committee does.
Okay.
Could you stick that slide up?
Oh, yes.
I know I gave it to you at the last minute. I'm sorry. There you go. And I didn't bring your copy, so I have to read it off the board. So. Okay.
Move this out of the way.
So much for all the little, uh, little paragraph markers.
And I can get rid of those.
Different version of word than I do.
Maybe she can't get to it.
Yeah, I'm not worried about it. Okay, so, uh, you know, we, we formed a, uh, committee to think about ways to modify our current grant program so that it, um, was, and more things that it could support to, um, make the community safer in addition to the screens that we've been doing for home hardening. And one of the concepts is to, uh, help form a Maraga or in the, is it fire safety? I get that I always get these names. I think it's a fire safe council, right? Because it's the Diablo Fire Safety Council.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, a Maraga or the Fire Safety Council, there's a kind of an umbrella organization that Diablo Fire Safety Council is in. I think there's one in Marin. I think there's one in, even Contra Costa County has a different one. For someplace else on the county has one, I bet.
There's, so it's California Fire. It's a California Fire State Council, which, uh, Bob Roper, uh, retired Orange County Fire Chief, or sorry, Ventura County Fire Chief is the chair of. And then underneath that, there are county, uh, fire safe councils. And in our case, uh, the Diablo Fire Safety Council covers Alameda, Contra Costa Counties. And in West County, there is a newly formed, uh, West County Fire Safety Council, mostly out of the Richmond Carriage Hills area, uh, just on the the northwestern end of the district where we, uh, where we run out of Tilden Park into Wildcat Canyon, transition to the city of.
Right. So the idea would be to have one of those for, uh, Aruna and Maraga and part, you know, they have a lot of objectives that they have, but the Diablo Fire Safety Council, one of the things that I, I know I've experienced personally, uh, is that they, they help, well, we, I'm not sure they do this, but we can certainly help set up new fireways neighborhoods. We can support them, you know, with communications and potentially with grants. And, uh, they could also manage a grant program. You know, uh, we have fairly limited staff to do this kind of thing, especially if it gets expanded at all. And, uh, they could certainly model their program after the Diablo Fire Safe Council. Those folks, you know, have, uh, like before and after pictures that they make you take, they allow you to have, uh, sweat equity. I think they let you charge, I don't know, fifteen dollars an hour for your personal time to do things. You have to do time sheets. But it isn't only paying outside contractors to do work. You can have it done, you know, with, with sweat equity also. Uh, we could limit it to, um, people that are, I think they, I guess they don't limit it to fireways neighborhoods, but we, we could think about that. Uh, they would probably have some limited amount of paid staff because they have to do accounting, uh, you know, a fair amount of accounting. And, and they could also coordinate with, uh, the city of Arinda, the town of Maraga and, and and Canyon, obviously, and make sure that this organization is coordinating the grants and the other, you know, um, communications that are happening for, uh, fire prevention. And, uh, they could solicit funding. I believe these other councils get money from the state, potentially from the county. Uh, so there are other sources of funding that they could be actively pursuing, uh, that we would qualify for because we have one of these organizations. And otherwise you, there's nothing there qualified to get the money. Um, so, because I don't think we can get it directly as MOFD, for example. So this would be a way for, you know, for us to be supporting an organization uh, that would be able to be qualifying for grants for our community. Um, and we would obviously go, we could put limits on any grants we gave them to be sending out, uh, about, you know, dollar amounts. They can get to certain kinds of activities, um, you know, making sure that they had multi-year benefits. In other words, not doing weed whacking, which only lasts a year. I think the Diablo Parasite Council, you know, does brush cutting and tree limbing, tree removal, those sorts of things rather than, you know, that last multiple years, rather than just single year kinds of benefits. So that's, you know, thing one. Uh, the next one would be as soon as possible, and we should, we, we need to think about putting this up for an agenda item next time. To think about ways we could expand, because it takes a while to set number one up. But to do things more like that, we can think about expanding the scope of the things we're willing to fund. It doesn't have to just include, uh, screens, for example, it can include, uh, I think we have found all metal gutter, uh, guards, for example. So that's again, home hardening kinds of things, but we could also fund, you know, uh, long-term fuel reduction, you know, long-term benefit, fuel reduction, uh, things also directly, much like the Diablo Fire Safety Council currently does. Um, and, and lastly, I think I've talked to a number of people around the community and, and including firewise leaders and, um, and, and just regular individuals. And they say, it, it's fine, you know, the benefit we all know of having a firewise community is that hopefully you get the whole community to participate. But in many communities, there are people who are, often they happen to be older, they're often on fixed incomes. They might have a nice house, but they might have bought it forty years ago when it was cheap and they're paying low amounts of taxes and they don't have, we actually had one of these that we brought before us, you know, I don't know, a year roughly ago, um, that we were potentially going to be, you know, spending enough money, the person was going to lose their home. And I don't think we want to be in that business. I don't want to be in that business at least. So I think setting up some kind of a program, a finance-based program that we could get the work done for people, uh, and if they couldn't afford it, you put a workman, we arrange to pay the, the, the workman, but we put a workman's lien against the home. So unlike the, you know, when we go out and have work done based on a, you know, not meeting the code and we pay for it, we put a lien on it. It gets paid in like the next year's tax bill by the people. So that doesn't really help, you know, somebody that's, they're still going to be on fixed income next year. So if this, on the other hand, can be a long-term commitment potentially, if they're, you know, in their eighties, they might live another ten years or whatever. And so it can be a longer term effectively a loan, but it's, you know, it, it looks and feels kind of like a loan, but it's a lien against the home. And when they sell it or refinance it, it has to get paid off and it can take priority over anything else because it's a workman's lien. So that way, you know, you're going to get the money back. What you're losing is the interest on the money, basically. But, but the advantage is that you get the whole community with, without any exceptions in the middle, without having to put an undue hardship on the people. And it can be needs tested, you know, really, just because they happen to be older or on a fixed income, doesn't mean they don't have a lot of other assets. Okay, so, um, you know, it, it needs, we need to figure out the legalities of making it a needs-based thing. But we, again, making sure that everybody in the community, that way, you know, their house doesn't catch on fire and cause all the other houses that did all the good work to catch on fire. So I think there are benefits to that kind of a concept. So those are the three ideas that we came up with. There can obviously be more. Any of those sound interesting to anybody? All of them sound interesting. So I guess questions, how do we follow up with that?
Um, so, we're perceived, I have to see if there's any discussion from the members of the board. And then, um, we'll, we'll take a look at, at figuring out, um, what fire safe, uh, council, uh, would look like. There's one in, as I mentioned, West County, there's one in the Oakland Hills, uh, that are subsidiaries of the, um, of Diablo Fire Safe. We'll find out what they're doing with regard to managing grants. Diablo Fire Safe typically distributes federal grants that pass through the state and are sent down, uh, but we'll, we'll find out more information about the, uh, what granting authority, uh, those agencies or those, uh, fire safe councils are, are doing and how, what internal controls they have. Um, the, the distribution, the accounting of public money and, and what sort of, um, the projects they're funding. Um, then, and that, obviously that would form the fuel reduction grant portion of that. Uh, the needs-based financing for workman's lien, uh, we'll, we'll explore with council and, uh, what we can do with that regard. I think obviously this would, that requires a caveat that this would be for voluntarily, uh, distinct from a, a code compliance, like.
Right.
Uh, two very different things, I believe, um, to voluntary, uh, and then.
And the point is, we'd have, you know, the, hopefully this organization can actually have people go work with those folks. So it isn't, doesn't have to be, first off, it takes some burden off of us because we're not having, the whole organization doesn't have to go go through the multi, you know, and have hearings and everything else, which we try to avoid anyway. Uh, hopefully this can make it happen on a, on a happy basis. You can actually help the people who often don't understand what needs, really understand what needs to be done. The last guy had some dementia. I mean, there, there are a lot of challenges that you can have. And if you can have an outside organization, that's, that's a nonprofit. We run on part two, but, but you don't need to, that's, that's supposed to be a helpful organization. We are too, um. It's a benevolent organization rather than, than a, you know, what, what we're in the business of doing. And so I think it, it just feels different, I think, when, when you have a helpful.
Would this be done under like a fire Y, uh, uh, the council? Would this be done under the council that we set up?
I would argue that this fire safe council would be the one that could have people that not only give the grants, but also give advice to people and, you know, and because you can have volunteers work for these things too. It doesn't have to be, you know, all paid positions.
So the grants could come from other places as well.
Also come from other places. It can come from us and, and they certainly, I think these fire safe councils, the Diablo Fire Safety Council gets all of its money from someplace else.
Yeah, okay.
So they.
I think there's even potentially major X, X, I mean, I know there's a high, high layer of.
So what's the governance for the organization, have a firewise council?
So there, you know, they, they do have, you know, governing documents and bylaws and all of that. We, if we gave grants, could obviously, for example, have a lot to say about how that grant money could get used to. So, you know, you can put strings on grants. People, they, the state puts strings on grants all the time.
But who runs it? I mean, who?
Well, you, they, they would have a, a staff, you know, they're.
It would be us helping to basically set this up, right? And get it functioning more than a long-term.
Right.
I mean, it's a long-term commitment by the district to them, but not necessarily long-term financial.
Right.
The existing groups that support our fire district that are volunteers.
Uh, yes, sir. The Diablo Fire Safety Council, um, obviously we're, we have been a, a regular recipient of their grants. And, uh, Jeff is, in acting as the fire marshal, is, uh, I believe the vice chair this year, sits on their board and is able to
Okay.
ensure that our residents are aware of the opportunities, uh, the the No Jumper Left Behind Project in Sippee Hollow, we've talked about a lot, that the catalyst for that was a five thousand dollar Diablo Fire Safe Council grant to the community. That, um.
Is that a hint?
That, yeah, um, that Jeff was involved in helping.
Nope. Hit the top one.
Not, we're not moving enough.
At least you got the projector on.
Nope, on the right, the button.
So that the existing Diablo Fire Safe Council does distribute grants within the community. And we have a, we have a seat.
Okay.
In that structure.
Got it.
This looks, you're going to have a lot more than, more seats because it'll only be our geographic, it would be a one-to-one footprint for us.
But it seems like we should investigate it further, right? I think. Yeah, I agree.
And then with the last one, uh, having to do with, um, with gutter guards. Uh, we're, we're tracking, we're working on where dividing the bulk, you know, and that, that continues, but we hope to have that resolved and tend to have that resolved before the current rains stop and we start thinking about wildfire season so that we can, eh, expand the offerings we have previously had for events, um, to gutter guards.
So can we put that on the agenda for next time? Because this isn't an action item. Can we put expanding, expanding the, uh, the program in, in multiple ways on, on the agenda for next time?
Yes, sir. And they, and that, that will require more review because the way the current, um, with specifically gutter guards, there is no state, uh, building material listing service rating for ember-resistant gutter guards. And one of the criteria we put in place with the grant program was that any events, uh, that we were, we had to be on the bill of material listing services. So if we just buy a bunch of these, we can sure we're buying the right ones, but we need to ensure that if a resident comes and says, I want to be reimbursed for the ones I bought via the, the grant program, that we have some mechanism to ensure that the, the event, the, the gutter guards that are being subsidized, the district grant program are the appropriate ones. And we're not seeing things such as, uh, plastic gutter guards.
They do make ones that are all metal, I know.
They do.
So, which I'm pretty sure can burn.
No, I, I agree. We need to, we're, we're investigating one, how to purchase them in bulk so we can hand them out kind, which I think is beneficial to everybody's economy to scale. But also if a resident comes and asks for reimbursement, for those that we have a standard that we can say it is ASTM whatever, which would be metal essentially for our purposes. And then it'd be approved so that we, we did not end up then confusing the issue that, oh, well, I could buy these plastic napkin ones and expect it to be reimbursed. And then that requires them to work because the standard we previously used, there is no, uh, gutter guard that's rated that standard.
Maybe we don't allow people to buy their own and be reimbursed. Maybe we only allow to be handed out. I mean, just that way we have to know what happens.
That, those are the sort of things we'll, we'll work out and bring back to the board for an opportunity to revise the direction, given that we are talking about public funds, who won't be very careful about how it's.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I think we have one more item, committee on joint fire prevention, city of Arinda.
We have not had a meeting since, uh, they, they have, they had one that was supposed to be on the calendar in another few weeks and they haven't followed up for some reason. So I need to go and find out.
And we have no report on the other one, so.
Session board on.
So.
Okay.
Any announcements, future agenda items?
So we need to open public comment. We have two hands raised. Jacob Arrola.
Hi, good evening, directors and staff. Um, I had some comments on this last committee. Uh, the first, actually, it was a question for John Holzman. Is this committee subject to the Brown Act? There wasn't any announcements of their meeting or anything like that, like we do for the audit committee.
Oh, excuse me. What committee was it, was it out of, uh, uh, Director Jervin?
It was the ad hoc committee, which was only two people. So no, it is not subject to Brown. It was for the, for the grant expansion program.
Oh, so that is an ad hoc committee. So yeah, under ad hoc committees are not subject to Brown.
Okay, is it something that can be open to the public though?
Um, it, they can be, it's up to the, it's up to the committee. They're not required to be.
Okay, because that wasn't discussed when the committee was formed, uh, and grant is not in the name of the committee.
I think it is.
What is the name of the committee one more time?
So on the screen here, you can show us, Martian.
Yeah.
Fire prevention program, I think that, I think it actually had to do with.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about grants. Um, then other concerns, uh, that this organization that you were speaking of, like a Maraga or into firewise thing, uh, you know, could become a political entity, um, much like the Arinda Firewise Council has become, and that's very concerning. Um, the other, uh, concern, um, is that this could be funneling tax dollars out of the district. So people that live in the district do not want their tax dollars going to other entities, shell companies, whatever it kind of appears as being created here. Um, you know, it's one thing if we have a grant and, you know, as the chief calls it, you know, grant gold dust or whatever it is, it's kind of leftover. And we can utilize that money, um, for a good cause within our district. That's one thing, but it's not tax dollars going to our district and then going to individuals. Uh, that's a, that's a huge concern. I think that should be a definite firewall. And lastly, I think there's going to be some families concerned, um, about the final idea, that third one, um, putting the lien on a home. Uh, I'm just thinking if I fictitiously had a grandma that lived in district or grandparents and they felt pressured to take a lien out against their house uh, in order to comply with some neighborhood, uh, social warriors, that would be a real concern to me as a family member that my, you know, grandparents on fixed incomes are being forced to do something uh, just to comply. Uh, as the, the chief has said, and I'm not putting words in his mouth, but you know, our biggest issue in this district is the outline areas mostly held by public entities, uh, not the individual. And it, it just seems like this is not a good use of taxpayer dollars. Uh, and certainly I would caution the board to spend five hundred thousand dollars towards home improvements within our district. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
So just to clarify, the, the, the whole concept is that it's a, this is a sister organization to the Diablo Fire State Council, which I'm pretty sure isn't political uh, and wouldn't be political. And I don't think the Arinda Firewise Council, for example, is political anymore at all. Um, and the, the people that were involved in that aren't on the, uh, involved in it at all. Um and the the people that were involved in that aren't on the, involved in it at all, um the uh. The money would by definition. What's? Would would by definition be spent only in uh in our district. Uh and you can put constraints on that, obviously, and the money would never be going out of our district, all this would be in done inside the district. Um so and as far as I'm concerned, we can make sure that it's only using local uh local people, you know, that live in the district. No problem at all with any of that. Um so I I don't think any of those concerns are actually a problem. We can certainly design it so they're not a problem.
Other comment?
Jonathan Goodwin.
Uh just for your information, um Diablo Fire Safe, last I heard, has never produced a budget document. And you should think about what that means. I know for years and years it was true, I'm not up to date. But um it's pretty likely, reason being is that their income is so. Unpredictable, that's the reason they give, and it's true, uh they apply for grants, they may or may not get anything. Uh their staff is one person with sort of a special relationship and a very. Good uh ability to corral all the people on the board who are almost all agency people, these are not political people. These are agency people who really go the other way when politics shows up. Um they also have never produced, to my knowledge, a but, uh sorry, a uh planning document, they're not into planning. Um it's just ad hoc, what are we going to do this month? Or the next six months, or what might come through, and how do we, basically, it's it's about. Funneling money into the agency areas where uh board members are employed. Um that's kind of what they do, and money comes from, basically from uh national. Uh sources, Bureau of Land Management, US Fish and Wildlife, National Park Service. Uh state is beginning to get into this a little bit, very little of it. Money comes to the state fire, California Fire Safe Council, they siphon off administrative fee. It goes out to the local Fire Safe Councils, they take off an administrative fee, and then it goes off, you know, to to some local project. Um so that's sort of the shape of what you're getting into, they're not in any position to help you with admin. So all this business that, as far as I know. Um all this business about, you know, we'll have this and we'll have that, all of that has going to have to be created in-house. If the district is getting, is going to finance this thing. That's getting a little tricky, um that really would have to be thought out. Um that, a lot of other aspects really need to be thought out, I mean, you know, what I'm hearing is a lot of, you know, we could do this and we could do that. Uh that list is probably going to get pared down quite a bit, but of course, that's that's how the process goes, you know, you start out with uh. With a broad vista and uh the vista, just like getting older, you know, the vista gets smaller and smaller as you age. So I just thought I'd I'd uh offer you those thoughts, thank you.
Just for, on on that cheery note. Just to ensure we're all talking about the same information, now the Devil Fire Safe Council, the twenty seventeen to twenty two through twenty twenty-two annual reports are available. And those include um detailed expenditures, accounts receivable, cash banks, total asset liabilities and equity. Uh all approved at the Devil Fire Safe Board Meeting on two sixteen twenty-three. Uh Devil Fire Safe Council also was a participant in the development of the county. Uh Community Wildfire Protection Plan and the recently completed uh Regional Prioritization Plan. Uh both would speak to prioritization of fire, fire risk reduction resources.
Thank you, chief.
And that concludes our public comment.
Okay. Any items for future? Agendas?
I think we just listed a few, but.
Okay.
So. I move we uh adjourn.
Second. And move them seconded, can we have a roll call?
He would second, was it Romer?
Romer, Romer.
Director Danziger.
Aye.
Director Hasler.
Aye.
Director Jorgens. Director Romer.
Aye.
Director Dex.
Aye.
Oh, here you go, using.